Okay, so any word meeting in March 5th, 2024? We are. I guess we officially need to open the meeting and take a roll call to open a meeting. So roll call vote, a roll call present, Addie Mae Weiss is here. Frank Hoke.
Here.
Will Dunham. And Rob Wolf.
Here.
Now, a. We will be. Do I need to make a motion to enter into executive session or do I make the make the motion to enter and then?
Motion entering session to discuss the strategy, blah, 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 blah.
All right. Motion to enter into executive session. To discuss strategy with respect to threaten potential litigation if the chair so declares that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigation position of the planning board and town. And the chair does so declare to discuss the matter of Hudson Walker versus Sherborn Planning Board versus Town of Sherborn pursuant to general laws, chapter 30A, section 21A. Subsection 3 Hudson Walker versus Sherborn Planning Board, Land Court 23 miscellaneous. 000398. So a second.
Second.
Rob Wolf seconds and roll call vote, Addie Mae Weiss, aye, Frank Hoke.
Aye.
Will Dunham.
Well, you're muted.
Muted, I can read lips though, so. And Rob Wolf.
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, we are back in open session, Heidi will. Let people who have been sitting in the waiting room join us.
Okay, that's it, everyone's admitted.
All right, welcome everyone, planning board, we have exited executive session, we are now in our virtual open session. Like the. Read the agenda for tonight. The agenda is approval of the meeting minutes. Discuss the next item for discussion is advisory public hearing presentation on affordable housing amendments that was held on February 20th. I'm sorry, yes.
It will be.
Oh, I'm sorry, discuss the presentation for advisory for the March 16th, sorry. Approve the renumbering of planning board rules and regulations discussion. An update on multifamily overlay zoning district and discussion of future meeting dates and then reports with other boards and entities and town planner report, so. I.
Motion to approve the agenda is written.
Yes, thank you.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Addie Mae Weiss, aye, approves the agenda, Frank Hoke.
Aye.
Bob Wolf.
Aye.
And Will Dunham.
Aye.
So first, let's do the minutes and the first set, we let's go back to the November 7th. 2023 minutes, did everyone get a chance to review those?
Yes.
Right. Motion to approve.
So, so moved.
Okay. All in further discussion. Okay, all in favor of approving the November 7th, 2023 minutes, Addie Mae Weiss, aye, Frank Hoke.
Aye.
Rob Wolf.
Aye.
And Will Dunham.
Aye.
And then. Motion to approve the February 6th, 2024 minutes.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, any further discussion on the February 6th minutes, any edits? No, all those in favor, Addie Mae Weiss, aye, Frank Hoke.
Aye.
Bob Wolf.
Aye.
Will Dunham.
Aye.
A motion to approve the February 13th, 2024 minutes.
So moved.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion on the February 13th minutes? None, hearing none, motion approved, roll call vote, Addie Mae Weiss, aye, Frank Hoke.
Aye.
Rob Wolf.
Aye.
And Will Dunham.
Aye.
And last, the motion to approve the February 20th, 2024 minutes.
I know Andy had some comments, Andy, do you want to bring them up?
Yeah. There was just one. Statement on page four that didn't seem to make sense to me. There's a reference, Mr. Calucci added that zoning under planned 40B development would give the developer the option to build 10% affordable housing. Instead of the 25% required under 40B. I didn't understand how the different percentages could refer to the same. Planning. Ordinance. So I wonder if there was a typo there.
I believe there is, I saw that, thank you for catching that, right here, I believe the intent was zoning under. It could, under the 3A development would give the developer the option to build 10% instead of the 25% under 40B, so.
Yes, that was what was intended.
So nice catch, Andy. Any other comments on the February 20th minutes? Motion to approve the February 20th amendments as amended. I think we moved and seconded already, so vote to approve. No.
Haven't moved and seconded this set.
Okay, we didn't move, we didn't move in second, okay, so we have a motion.
I moved it.
Frank moves, second.
Second, yeah.
Hey, Rob seconds, all right, all in favor of approving the amended minutes of February 20th, 2024, Addie Mae Weiss, aye, Frank Hoke.
Aye.
Rob Wolf.
Aye.
And Will Dunham.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to. Affordable housing amendments. This is on here because we have the, it goes before advisory on Saturday is the so-called Bloody Saturday. Where all of the various warrants are presented before the advisory committee and the select board. I am intending to lay out our rationale for making the amendment to, for proposing the language that we are proposing for the warrant article. For making the changes on the affordable housing zoning bylaw of. Reducing the trigger point for inclusionary zoning from. Two units to six units to be comparable with. Surrounding towns. And also to reduce the number of required affordable units to 10% instead of 15%. To be in compliance with the anticipated multifamily zoning bylaw as well as. Just the kind of. Based, basing it on also feedback that we did get when we were working on this in 2018, 19 and. Town saying financially, it adds a burden and potentially pushes a developer to. Go the 40B direction rather than utilizing our inclusionary zoning bylaw for subdivisions. Anyone else have any thoughts or concerns or anything that they feel needs to be addressed? Okay.
Addie Mae, just as a layperson's comment. I think that the board is going to need to be prepared to address the question of whether there is. A favoritism being exercised for a specific development or developer, I think the question is going to come up, so it would. Behoove the board to think about how to respond to that.
Yep, I mean, I think we've talked a little bit about this as a board when we were working on the draft language that. We have our minutes from 2018 and 2019 when we were working on inclusionary zoning and we were working with. MAPC leaders. Who, to help us draft inclusionary zoning bylaw language, who at the time felt that we were being. Quite. I guess, I'm trying to get aggressive by going for a 15%. Affordable requirement and the time in 2018, 2019, we. Had a recent housing production plan, but we. Were still somewhat new. In. Kind of, we'd only had one, a couple 40B projects and we were. Really trying to aggressively figure out how are we going to add affordable units, we think we still. As a town, need to add affordable units, but we also want to as a town allow for smart growth. And allow for appropriate subdivisions. That make financial sense, so. Marian, do you have a thought on that?
You're muted, Marian.
That's my worst habit. One of my worst habits. Yeah, you'll have five minutes. At the advisory select board hearing and you'll have five minutes. At town meeting. So I think it would be wise to put together a really nice, smooth rationale. As, as part of why, you know, why it's, why it's okay, you've got it, I think it's correct. That you're going to have to head this off at the pass. Because that's the first thing people are going to say at town meeting and you have to put that to bed before, right in the very beginning. So. I think it's good to have a really smooth presentation ready. When you present this at town, at advisory and town meeting. And then my second comment is. That. What was my second comment? I guess, I forgot it, so I'll come back to you, sorry.
It's okay. Anyone else?
Oh, yes, I remember, my second comment is thinking ahead toward town meeting, I read, we. We have a new version of the warrant that has this article in it and I was reading through it today. And this article. Is all marked up, of course, because that's the way it has to be, there's. There's strike throughs and there's extra words and it's, it's a pain to read it. But that's how it's printed in the warrant, so I wonder if it would be wise. Both for advisory and at town meeting to maybe have a handout or provide a clean version. Of the revised bylaw for people. So they don't have to wade through the. The marked up version. Just a suggestion.
Okay. Jade Hargrave, you have your hand up, yes, I'd love to hear your thoughts.
Yeah, it's Jade Hargrave. Do I need to give my address?
Yes, please.
49 Rockwood Street, I'm wondering how this proposed. Change compares to the developments that are Meadowbrook Commons and the other one that's along Coolidge Street. Can you speak to that?
It would, I mean. The proposed change would be applicable to anything future forward.
So does this mean it's going to reduce? The number of required affordable units in those developments?
It doesn't change anything for anything that was approved under. A 40B, the apartments are 25% affordable because they are approved under the 40B comprehensive permit process. So this only applies to. This only applies to town. Basically, we've had a subdivision bylaw. In our zoning regulations for. Forever, for, you know, years and years. The last subdivision was probably Cider Hill. In the eighties. So we don't get too many, or actually, I take it back, the last subdivision was Knoll Crest. Four, three houses really, but we don't have a lot of subdivisions, but the discussion was, it was a tool in the toolbox that was. When we were wrestling in 2016, 17, 18 with our housing production and plan and what are the toolboxes out, the toolbox, tools in the toolbox. Available to us as a town to. Encourage affordable housing production, one of those is to add inclusionary housing zoning where you do have an element where you require. A certain number of affordable units in a subdivision, but. It won't change. Ideas on, it doesn't change anything that's been granted under a comprehensive permit.
But I think the question was regarding Meadowbrook Commons, the EA development. And as I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, please, but as I recall, the town meeting vote. Last fall was that the affordable housing percentage. Required of Meadowbrook Commons will be that in place at the time. Of. Of the time of when, maybe at the time of whatever, I mean, it took into.
At the time of the plan, so it's whatever that they will, the agreement. Was that they would comply with the bylaw, whatever the bylaw is.
Yeah, so does that mean the plan has been finalized yet? Where's the plan? Okay.
So it's. If town meeting supports Meadowbrook Commons. Potentially their plan could, their final plan, they would, they, that plan goes before planning board when that, that whole process, when that is. Presented, that's part of the benefit of EA zoning is it does go before all of our local town boards. If town meeting passes and the new language for inclusionary zoning. Then potentially it would be, it would comply, it would be 10% requirement of affordable units.
Supposed to 25%?
No, EA's never was 25, EA. EA actually has no requirement for affordable. But our subdivision bylaw requires at the moment, which is our inclusionary zoning requires 15% at the moment. So EA had a requirement for 40, I mean, EA elderly affordable is, it's one or the other, it's not a requirement to be. Anything Abbey Road is an EA development and there are zero affordable unit in Abbey Road.
Okay, so what's the other one, it's, the names have had changed and so what's the apartment? Building development called, does anyone?
Coolidge Crossing, that was, that was approved under a comprehensive permit, the 40B friendly. Local initiative project and so that is not under our local zoning and it is required to be 25% affordable, that would not change at all.
That doesn't lessen the burden on the neighbors of. That property. Is it in terms of the number of affordable units there? Right, it's 25 and it won't be 10%, it won't be reduced.
The, the Coolidge Crossing apartment would be the same as it was. As it is now, nothing would change.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Any other? Thoughts, comments, I will work to. Tidy up. The, I'll get the exact wording and language of where, the history on where we were when we were drafting. The inclusionary zoning and the. Recommendations that we were maybe being a little too aggressive, but we, but they said, all right, go give it a, we'll give it a. Deal try with the idea that that's what bylaws are capable of, that we have the ability to go back to town meeting and say, well, that didn't work. And this is. Our lessons learned and adjust. To be in accordance with. The kind of best practices that we see in the language of other surrounding towns. Unless anyone else has anything else to say about. Affordable housing, the next item on our agenda is discussion of the renumbering of planning board rules and regulations. Are we, okay, we're moving on to that? Okay. So it's come to our attention. The version on our. Town website of our rules and regulations, the numbering. Has omitted. The rules and regulations 3.8, which were approved December 4th, 2019. And in order to make the numbering work. Think if I have that document to share. So it's. 3.8. Eight, right now, 3.8, if you have the rules and regs. 3.8 is decision. This was discussed, but somehow the edits were not. Incorporated, so right now, decision is 3.8, so in order to. Add the, to insert the. Farm and. Rules and regs for farm. How did I miss? 3.4, 3.4, 3.4. Again, in order to insert. We now, we need to renumber everything after. The 3.8, the old 3.8 that's on the town published. Version needs to change to 3.9 and everything else bumps, so 3.8 becomes 3.9. 3.9 becomes 3.10. Becomes 3.11. So this is all. In our existing printed published version, it's just the numbering. Would be adjusted. Does this make sense? To everyone and does anyone have any questions or concerns about? I'd like to. Update this and get it actually published on the town's website so that the 3.8 that we have been referring to for farm events, rules and regulations is actually published.
Who's that a motion?
A motion to.
I guess, I did have one question when we were looking before. At the. At the writing of it, I just didn't really quite understand. The. The first. Clause in that, I'm trying to find it again on my desk, sorry.
If we're gonna. Change rules and regs, I, I don't know, I believe that we, if we're actually going to change language, I think we need to post. A different meeting for changing language, I mean, these rules and regs were approved in, back in 2019. Potentially there is language issues, this is not a clean version here exactly, it was just what I had available to, where Gino had shared at some point, but it then never got adopted, the numbering. Change never got adopted. And. Somehow that step of publishing it didn't happen, so I want to formally agree to. Accept the numbering change so that we can get it published. Marian?
Just a reminder, section three is special permits or section three is site plan review? What is section three?
Section three is. Site plan review, so section, now there is, I know that, you know. There was a whole code, I saw then another document where we had, had been submitted and the towns, I forget what to call, where their coding and everything is getting new sections. It'll get, this gets a new like 2140 so that we don't have multiple section threes, right now we have multiple section 3.1s in our rules and regulations and it's. Complicated and I would, at first I thought we needed to go and adjust all of that, but for right now, my goal is to make sure that we actually have the farmer rules and regulations out there because we don't. In an easy access place, we, we have them, we voted on them, but we don't have them easily accessible, if someone asked for them as. As it was done, the experience had been that for the few site plan. Presentations that have been come before planning board, town planner did provide just the 3.8 rules and regs that were approved. In 2019, but they didn't get put. You know, consolidated in a document that's available for anyone to just find on the website.
And, and as far as special permits goes. Is there a separate section for special permit review because? Site plan and special permit are not. The same thing. Unless, unless the town's policy is that. All special, special, is that. If a site plan is, is required, that means a special permit is required. Here it's called, in this, where your cursor is now, it's called site plan special permit. But it seems, I mean, this is just an issue that I think has been confusing for planning board all along.
I agree, I think there are some real, I mean, I think there's a lot of housekeeping that we need to come back to and revisit. That our language in our rules and bylaw, our rules and regulations, as well as some, some of our. Bylaw language. Needs some clarifying, I agree that this is. Not. As clear as it could be, the steps required are not laid out very clear, however, for, I think that's a separate meeting and we do want to address that. But my immediate concern is simply getting. The language numbering approval from our board to approve the number change of making the old 3.8. Now 3.9 so that we can insert this section. Of the. The farm rules. This special conditions for farm events. We can insert that as now the new 3.8 so that it fits where it was intended back in 2019. And actually get. Put out there available with, you know, the whole document.
Oh yeah, that makes sense, that makes sense, but. Yeah, okay.
Because right now, 3.8 on the town published version does not, 3.8 is decision right now and none of this is in. The 2022 version of the published. Rules and regulations that's on the town website.
Right.
Would this become, would this become the 2024?
I, I don't think so because I think you're going to have a hearing that would have to happen if you're changing that and saying it's the new version, all we're doing is an administrative correction to the 2022 one. Is my understanding. And.
We're not changing any language, we're just adjusting the numbering.
It's edited in 2024.
That way. I'd have to check with Jackie on that to see which.
That way you can track which book you're looking at, make sure you're looking at the right documents. And then when you're going back in time.
Well, we don't publish them anymore, we don't print them anymore. I don't, I believe, I don't know when the last version was printed, it's only available electronically, so.
Well, somebody takes an electronic copy of the, this version and has a hard. Well, somebody takes electronic copy of the this version and has a hard copy of it and then. You know, walks in and says, this is the one I got versus which is the new one that's on the website. So I just. Yeah.
I can check with Jackie and ask if that would require a hearing, if we have, if we're saying that's an amendment or not, or if.
Well, it doesn't have to be amended, just be an edited and it's just listed, uh, at the bottom as an edit. In some fashion.
Or if we have to say maybe administrative edit, twenty twenty four.
Yeah, or administrative, twenty twenty four administrative edit of the twenty twenty two approved. Rules and regs.
Yeah, we'll come up, I can figure out what the wording is on that.
Steph, you have some thoughts on that?
Yeah, um. E- even on the screen you're showing right now, there are track changes to the language, can you explain whether those are? Ha, ha, what?
I don't have the, the, yeah, I had one version where Gino had. Adjusted these numbers and then I have, there was another document that just that's separate, that's just the, um.
Three point eight section alone without the rest.
Three point eights clean, but it doesn't, you know, it didn't show where it fit in between all the other rules and regs.
But in the three point eight section, you can see track changes, um.
And we're not voting those. Because you already made a version after this.
Version on my screen now, that's that's the that was voted in twenty nineteen, all.
Yeah.
All I was illustrating was. That the old, you know, at the end of three point eight. Three point eight point nine definitions. Now there will be. The. What we have.
Right, but I guess just for clarity, I wonder if, uh, just for clarity, are these. Track changes in, for example, three point eight point two. Are those language that was already approved? So any number of low impact events per year, okay, I'm I'm comparing that to my screen, so if you go back to the other word document. It might be helpful. For the record. To accept the changes in the word document. That were, that were not voting on tonight, do you know, do you know what I mean, that 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 the board is not voting on tonight, just because. When the backup is provided of the other word document and it shows these track changes. It appears as though these are changes to be made tonight. So I wonder if just maybe. For the record of just.
Was, this was the, the, the document that was approved on. As as Heidi shared with us.
Yep.
One was, uh, the one that has the numbering that shows where three point eight fits in and with and then shows the need to change three point. The the current three point eight two now a new three point nine, that was this July two thousand eighteen. That had the track changes in that, but the actual final language was approved, um. I thought it was approved, or maybe it was approved December, December, I know December fourth, maybe it was approved December fourth, two thousand eighteen, and then somehow Gino had, he named his, the clean version. These were documents from Gino's computer.
I'm just thinking about from a record keeping perspective, like, it might make sense to create to not to rely on the July twenty eighteen and December twenty eighteen documents.
Yep.
But for the purpose of record keeping, to go to the one with the numbering changes and just accept the. Editorial changes provided, the language changes provided that they're consistent with what. Was voted in, so that when, when somebody comes back and looks at the attached documents to these minutes. It's clear that only numbering was changed. Because the way the document looks right now, it looks as though. Language is being changed.
So you vote to adopt the language, I think they should have had a hearing.
This is the language.
It's the correct language.
Okay, so, so ignore, ignore the previous one, and what we will compare is we've got this. And we've got what we know. Is on our town website.
But I think that the point being made is that the minutes will refer to a document, and we should have a clean document that only shows the changes in the numbering. And not the changes in the text in a track changing mode, I think that's what Steph is.
Yes, thank you for articulating that.
Before us, a mix, uh, a, we have a mixture, we don't have that clean document as a reference in front of us. I think that that was, that was the. Preferred situation.
What's on our town website? This is a clean version of.
I mean, maybe it's just a matter of of. Attaching a document to the minutes that. Is what you're showing with the other version, not this one, the other version and just.
I haven't found, we haven't, the problem is I haven't found Gino's document, Heidi's not been able to find Gino's version in a word document of the twenty twenty two. Rules and regs, I mean, the ideal would have been for me to have the word document and be able to show you. Just inserting three point eight and adjusting the numbering, I, we only had that other old document that showed how. Three point nine would become, as three point eight would become three point, the existing decisions of three point eight would become.
But but I have a word version, I mean, it could be, it could just be.
The rules and regs of all of it?
No, no, of just three, of just section three, but my point, my point being that it shows both the number, the section numbering changes. And language changes.
Yeah, but that, the numbering changes in this. Language, I I haven't gone through that one word by word to see if that matches the. The one that was the final twenty nineteen. Document.
Okay, so maybe, maybe then to the document, and maybe this is just a way I need to document it in the minutes, is that will only show the approved language, three point eight, that you're showing right here. We will not attach the other document, which is too confusing.
Right, we're only showing, we're inserting. The goal is inserting right in here, the far, the the three point eight farm event rules and regulations that was approved by planning board. I believe it was. Technically December fourth, two thousand eighteen approval. And. As a board, we will agree that three point eight decision becomes in order to insert the three point eight that was approved, three point eight becomes three point nine.
Okay. Okay, I I've, 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 I've got it, how to, how to document it in the minutes, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion.
Um, I mean, yes.
We just want a record of the vote that you agreed to renumber the other ones, that's it.
Okay. Uh, motion to approve renumbering.
Term.
Second. Um, there a second?
Sure, second.
Okay, second, all in favor, Addie Mae Weiss, I. Frank Coke.
All right.
Rob Wolf.
Hi.
Okay.
And how about Will?
Uh, uh, Will, I used to, I'm sorry, I can't. The screen share, I lost you.
Hi.
Thanks. Okay. All right, um. The other agenda items, um, update on multifamily overlay district zoning, we, at the February twentieth hearing, we, um. Had a number of good discussions, we agreed to withdraw the warrant from this spring town meeting. With the idea that we were. Going to go for some more technical assistance and. Um. Further explore, um, I will say I do want to, at this time, acknowledge the work that Chris Owen did for the planning board. His, uh, passion in the number of years that he did assist with. Kind of helping us try to drive things for the, in the town's best interest, um. We've seen what's happened, uh, Milton's been made an example of Milton being. An immediate MBTA community because they have a commuter rail. Station in their town, their compliance deadline is December twenty twenty four. Sherburne being an adjacent community, our compliance deadline is December twenty twenty five, so we have a little bit more breathing space. But as everyone's probably familiar, we have seen that it is. Very much a state mandate, it is not a, uh. Opting out is not. Um, an option, we do need to come to terms and find the best way for. Um, complying, and I think there is a, there are some good benefits to complying and options for the town, as we saw, there were, um. When we presented it initially in January, there were a number of residents who. Could see some positive. Reasons for adopting multifamily overlay zoning, and I think guys despises some time to, um, do some further exploration, Heidi, do you, you've gotten some. More kind of, you've had some discussions with, um, MHP who's been driving this and, um, Katie Lacy. Do you wanna give us an update on what you've learned?
Sure, uh, so. I think many of you know that the state is now suing Milton, so Milton had to comply by twenty twenty three. Oh, sorry, twenty, that's okay.
I know.
Yeah, no, um, but. So they are now not in compliance and they've had, uh, so far a hundred and forty thousand of their grants pulled. Um, I don't know how, everyone's kind of watching to see where this is gonna go. And I've been talking with MHP because our maps are not. In compliance with what there's some changes were made and it looks like. We had these, we had hired a consultant and had them create the maps and the bylaw, and they finished all this work in June. Of last year, in August, some new changes came out and those, it looks like some of those changes then actually, um. To maybe took out some more parcels of the maps, but whatever reason, our 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 maps aren't in compliance and there are some questions on our bylaw. So I'm trying to find out if we can get any more technical assistance. With with help with getting the maps updated and the bylaws updated and. I had a meeting with MHP, they put us in in, um, contact with someone. It would be about twenty thousand dollars to do this, I don't know if MHP is gonna give us the money, and we now have to put an argument together of why we should get. More money to do this and, um, we're sure gonna try to figure out how because. We do have some time, but the timeline we're looking at is, um. Starting again in the summer, talking with the residents, trying to get some education going and do more outreach, talking with historical district. And then the goal is by September, October, to have identified. Clear, clearer the parcels, look at. Um. What would fit, consider the residents that wanna be included, how would that work? And hopefully get some new models done that we would have our bylaw and that maps done by December. And then we can go into. Framing the warrant. And everything in that, getting the language set for February for select word meetings and be set for next April for a town meeting. So. Looking for funding and then working on, um, a busy fall with some of the updates. Any questions?
Let's see, it sounds like a good timeline.
Okay.
Um, Heidi, I thought that there was discussion in, uh, past meetings about, um. Funding being available.
So that was for outreach. So there's two different sources of fundings, apparently we had. We had a grant to do the maps and the bylaw, which was spent. And then we got a grant to do the outreach and we do still have some money left on that outreach grant. But that is not gonna help us do the maps and the bylaw again.
No, and it's our understanding the technical assistance grant, K, the grant. Never, those funds never came to the town, they were directly, they were paid by that, the grantee, which was MHP. Directly to the consultant. So, um, the consultant, there was. Was that twenty thousand last summer? That was paid directly to the consultant, so the town never got a, an invoice, it just. The town got twenty thousand worth of technical assistance. Um. And so that part's done, and then we did, there was a separate grant for outreach and education, that money did come to town and we used that money for, um. The meetings that we had with the consultant that were outreach and, um. Were we able to use that for the mailing, the townwide mailing? To, um. And, uh. Educate to provide the information on where people could get in, could find out more about three A. On the town's website and the Q and A session that Heidi held.
Yeah, and and the PowerPoint from that meeting is up on our website. So it is available, uh, interestingly enough, so Goldson was the consultant that we've used in the past and this. Meeting that I just had, um, yesterday was with a company called, uh, Community Scale. Which MHP also uses, and that's one of the ones that they are recommending that if they give a grant for us that we would use them. So. We'll be updated as it gets closer.
Um. I have a question about how we feel that the, um, that the outreach went on February the twentieth, do we feel that that was an effective, uh, presentation, do we feel that. Citizens left that meeting. More knowledgeable, uh. Clearly understanding the, the, the three A and the overlay and. Benefits and the drawbacks of it, or do we feel that, um. It left some room for. Improvement.
There's always room for improvement, but I I felt on the whole, I was glad that we were able to hold that meeting when we did, um, and Frank, thank you for. Facilitating, I think it definitely opened up that, um. We, while we do have equipment for hybrid meetings. It's got room, it it needs improvement, um, at the moment, I think, uh. You know, it was a quite a feat to try and navigate. What was going on in the space at town hall as well as what was going on virtually and, um. As a a virtual attendee, it was hard for me to see who was speaking in the. In the space at town hall, it was hard to, um. You know. Follow what was going on, so I think our our audio and our camera situation at town hall is, um, is challenging. For the goal of educating and 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 also, um. Providing information to. Planning board members of what concerns exist, I think it was extremely valuable, I think we, um, now know where we need to go do some more homework. And what we need to, what questions we need to address. Um. I don't know how you felt about it, Frank, since you were there. And Andy, I I guess you were also there, but I couldn't see you in the, in the, from the way the camera was set up at town meetings, I mean, at town hall, sorry. Um. Uh, Frank, if you have thoughts and Andy and then Marion after Frank and Andy, Frank.
I I thought that, uh, um, many of the attendees, at least at town hall, and possibly online as well. And can, didn't get the complete understanding, they were, they were confused and. You know, let left with a more negative than a positive feeling about, uh, three A. And the concern is for me is that with Milton, um. You know, uh, doing this, uh, resolution, um. That many other towns are starting to think about doing the same thing, and then if if that ends up being something that ends up happening in Sherburne, that if we don't. Have a better, more focused, um. Presentation on the the benefits as well as the challenges of doing this. That, um, you know. We we may get some citizens trying to overturn. Our annual town meeting vote as well. And then that would be, you know, really pretty problematic.
I think you have a good point, Frank, cause I thought one of the things I came away with is we need to know exactly what, I think there's a dollar amount we can put out, what types of grants we would lose. So that is something we need to, like, I can start looking into as well.
The dollar grants, what the benefits are of having the overlay district, you know, what what what, what issues there are, do you have to do something when you have an overlay district, I think people walked away with that. Um, not really understanding that completely and, you know, the mixed use requirements, I I I just think that, uh, that there's a lot of technicality in there that that, um. People walked away with, uh, and chatting even after the meeting in the hallways. That, you know, that that they were not in favor of this and they had to bite this, uh, tooth and nail. And, um, I, one of the things that I did was, I just happened, uh, as I was, um. Walking my geriatric dog this afternoon, um. I was listening to, uh, NPR and NPR had a program, it was, it's, uh, Boston radio, you know, that segment which happens at three o- three o'clock. And, uh, they they were talking about the MBTA and the non, uh, binding resolution that they put through and, uh. How they did that and, um. Why they did that, and I I think it just made that whole Milton situation a lot more clear. So that when somebody talks to us about, oh, well, Milton's overturning it and blah, 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 we should be in, in line with them. Um. That you can really. Be able to answer those kinds of questions by understanding the Milton thing better. And this. And this was a pretty simple, yet direct uh professionals answering that. The woman that ran that whole um um program against it, uh against that annual town meeting vote spoke for for a bit on it and then um they had somebody else speak about it as well. So uh Heidi sent it at five thirty-three this evening as an email out to you guys that uh recommend, if you don't have, you can read it and you can also listen to it if it's an NPR program link.
Andy, did you have any takeaway from the February twentieth meeting since you were in person?
Yeah, I mean, I I think there were, I I I thought it was a kind of a mixture of responses that hopefully would, in a way, would be representative, I think, of the town. There were people who were very close by, abutters, who 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 were pretty upset at at the, in their minds, the fixed pros- prospect of major developments on their doorstep that were being enabled by this. Um, I think there were a lot of people who who asked questions and actually did get clarification. Um, and I I'd agree with Frank, I think there are people that still left the room and still had had some misconceptions. Um, uh, uh, and so, you know, it were, was was still on our journey of informing people. And I think it gets back a little bit to what we were talking about um uh on the previous item in terms of the the really making cogent, well-constructed arguments uh in in presenting things to people. I think the presentation from the consultant was very good, but it was quite long and it included, you know, maybe fifty pieces of information. Whereas fundamentally, maybe there are seven or eight clear points that really need to be made. Um, and I I I I would imagine that as this evolves and we go through the town li- uh the the timeline that that Heidi mentioned, there's gonna be a lot more other examples from other towns other than Milton. And there'll be many more, you know, there may be many more parallel aspects to to sort of bring in and illustrate. So, but anyway, my sense was, you know, the the the, it it was a very useful uh process and there's work still to be done. So I guess that's that's not news to anybody. Um, I did, I did feel it, there were, I did, I did think there was a sense that it was, that there were many people who had stepped forward in their understanding, even if they hadn't reached the finish line.
Marion, did you have some thoughts? And your hand was raised before.
Oh, oh, yeah, my head went down automatically. Um, I wanted to just echo what both Frank and I think Andy said uh and add my kind of perspective. I was at that meeting virtually. I thought Frank did a great job of of managing the kind of tricky situation in in person and trying to make that work, as did Addie May. But I was, I have to say, parts of the presentation by the consultant were were good. Parts of it were not that great and not that clear. And uh didn't, I didn't feel she was tuned in to what we, what people in Sherburne, especially the people along Kendall that I think you're referring to, what they needed to hear. And as I was listening to it, I was hoping that you wouldn't hand over the uh presentation of this to the consultant to do the whole thing. Um, because I think you need to have someone present it that has their, their finger on the pulse of Sherburne much more than she did. And also, some of her answers to questions were rather confusing, even to me, who who is pretty steeped in this stuff and kind of all over the place. And I think basically, I think we could, we could do better. If we're gonna use a consultant, use the consultant for maybe part of it, you know, providing some images or whatever. But I was, I was not highly impressed. I think we can do better.
You you said it much more directly, Marion.
Yeah.
Well, as as Heidi said, the um, you know, we we've had discussions. Um, MAPC is um, Heidi reached out to them to find out, okay, if we, the technical, the technical work that was done for us in writing the bylaw was done, as said, was completed back in June a year ago. Then there were changes at the state level in August. And uh when we got the response back from the um uh Office, I cannot, E O H, Office of Livable Conditions Communities, one of these days it's gonna stick the old D H C D um department. The the response from our consultants was, well, yes, it's not compliant because the rules changed. So um I think it's D H uh, MHP is um sent Heidi the new application for requesting further technical assistance and has um proposed a different consultant just to, you know, get a different perspective. Um, start fresh potentially, not totally fresh. Luckily, we've got a lot that we've learned in this process. So um I think, all things considered, we are in a good place. And I am, I am, as I said, I do owe Chris Owen a lot for getting us to this point. And we're not just trying to start now that we, we've got a lot of experience behind us and we are able to, you know, really answer the harder questions. Now we can start really getting, doing our homework and understanding the harder questions out there. Rob.
Um, yeah, I'm just gonna say uh two things, one of which is, you know, I think people more or less understood the general intent of the thing, but um at that meeting, but there certainly is not agreement on it. And um, you know, there there definitely are some quite different views from different sectors of the town that we are going to be getting feedback from. Um, second thing is, I know I had sent some comments to Heidi on the regulations. I don't know, I I can't remember whether they were circulated to the rest of the board yet or not. But um my feeling is that the actual wording of the regulation is extremely confusing. And it's, it's poorly organized and I think we really have to work hard on that. Um, I think it's um.
On the bylaw language that
Yeah.
that our town put forward.
Yeah, it's, it it's phrased in a very ambiguous way in some cases. And it's also, you know, there's a section that's supposed to deal with what's by right. And then it starts talking about permissive things. But then there's the next section, which was supposed to be about the, and it's just, um, I I think it's gonna take, you know, some serious working sections to really straighten it out and have everybody all on the same page as to, this is what it really means.
Right. Um, I do, so I think um, you know, that we, the goal would be to have that language nailed down by mid-December, like finalized by mid-December. Because we know now our experience is that you get to the holidays and you come back from the holidays and um you are submitting the language to advisory and select board. And select board wants last, you know, absolute drop dead, all finalized language by mid-February. So um I I do foresee us starting to tackle the language and um, you know, probably in uh, starting in August, if we get the technical assistance grant. Um, ahead of that, we can all start kind of like you've done, Rob, already pull apart the things that just don't maybe make sense that we need to address. And we'll probably have some separate planning board meetings, kind of like when we did when we worked on the master plan, where we're just looking at language and we have a separate session where we're not discussing anything else and we're just looking at, working on bylaw language. And maybe we even use those sessions to do some bylaw language cleanup proposals for um other areas of bylaws that that we're looking at. So um, I guess be prepared to do some English homework, writing homework. Um.
Will, why are you smiling?
We'll, we'll spend many, many, many hours working on that master plan and wordsmithing line by line. And I hope we don't need to go to that degree. But I do think there is a a merit to sitting and um just having time dedicated to to looking at language.
And Rob, I didn't circulate it yet because I was trying to save it for after, something after town meeting. I'm trying to just focus on us getting through the affordable housing and what what our immediate needs were.
That's fine.
Um, the next item on the agenda is uh future meeting dates. Um, we have executive session scheduled for the um, for next Tuesday, the twelfth, with Town Council. Um, that's at, Heidi, is that seven o'clock? So seven o'clock. And it will be planning board members with Town Council. Um, so that's scheduled and it will be virtual. The next meeting on the, kind of to go with the, what should be, the planning board should be regularly meeting the first and third Tuesdays of the month. Uh, we've kind of been in a, I know we're in a, everyone's a little tired. We're in a, we've been doing weekly meetings um and it's getting, it does get tedious. I think it's important to have that meeting on the nineteenth. Um, and but also will be virtual. I think until, I don't, unless someone disagrees, as much as I like meeting in person with the requirement to either record by having Dover Sherburne cable TV present and recording or utilizing the hybrid. Um, I'm just not sure that the technology is there to get a clear recording using the Town Hall hybrid. It is, it like I, it was hard to hear people who were in the room. It was hard to see who was speaking. Um, I don't know, it's, it's, it's not quite there. I believe there are possibly towns doing it that are, that um, I know Steph had mentioned that she had witnesses in her professional capacity, her day job. Um, that there is technology out there and it's something that we will need to work with town administration to see. But um unless anyone has an objection at this point, I'd like to continue with virtual meetings.
I mean, we could, if there's a meeting that we need to, if we have an A and R that we need all signed or something like that, um, you know, you you can make that decision and post that separately and, you know. But for the time being, keeping it as um, as a virtual, I think is okay for me. Rob, what do you think?
I'm uh, I don't know, I I kind of actually like the um alternating format because um, I don't know, I I I thought it was easier to achieve consensus in a meeting where we're all sitting around the table. But um, I I'm willing to do whatever the rest of the board wants to do.
Um, yeah, I mean, I guess I I I, you know, going a long stretch like we did during COVID where we never saw each other in person, I I don't really relish that either. There is a, um, there is a benefit to having us together in person. Um, it does make it challenging though with the, I I I wish our hybrid situation was better. I don't know if we moved the, the, you know, figure out changing the room, move the tables. I I think it needs to be explored for for this month if, uh, because I'm not sure that we'll have a lot on the agenda for March nineteenth. Um, I'd like to propose that March nineteenth be Zoom. And um for April, I guess we can revisit and maybe we can have some discussions with um, you know, see if there's, if there's other IT options to make the hybrid work better.
If it's helpful, I'd be glad to figure out who within the town of Norwood can talk to someone in the town of Sherburne because um they just bought a third owl. So now they have one in their senior center where they hold a lot of public meetings. They have one in their town hall and they have one now in their, I think their DPW headquarters. Um, they're a little bit of a bigger town, but um the technology is working really well for them.
And it's the town of Norwell or Norwood?
Norwood, Norwood.
Norwood. So I imagine, I wonder if their meetings, their recorded meetings are probably on YouTube of some capacity. I think it'd be interesting to watch.
I've been some of them.
Okay, it would be interesting to go in and watch and just see like right now, if 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 we were meeting hybrid like we get on February twentieth, everyone in the room is reduced to this tiny little, you know, one little square and it's really hard to kind of feel um engaged. I I, at least I found it was a challenge.
What are the ways of fixing it? Is by changing your view and making the view to what, you know, the speaker view so that uh it becomes a larger, whoever's speaking becomes larger. And that even though there's multiple people in the room, at least the image of the person, the the tile that is talking is a larger tile than, you know, uh, if you have it in the grid view or gallery view, as they call it. You see that up in the upper right-hand corner? Is that how you have your setup now?
Yeah, I'm in grid, so I could, I could see that working. And I guess if we were also recording Zoom, if we're running a hybrid meeting and we're recording it so that it would be shared, then that would require someone um maybe changing. So that, I mean, it is like when Dover Sherburne Cable TV was recording, they're zooming in on whoever's speaking. So if you're looking at that recording, you're able to follow the flow of conversation a little better. So I think there's, I think there's some technology things. If we can get some information on how it's set up in Norwood and um and maybe do some changes. Um, like I said, I I don't, I agree, I don't relish just being a hundred percent Zoom and and not having us in person ever. Um, but but right now, with especially with March, we're having a meetings every week. Um, we'll plan on Zoom for our March nineteenth meeting, if that's acceptable. Um, reports on meetings with other boards and entities, and anyone have anything? Um, uh, yes, Jeff.
Sorry, I was looking for the raise hand icon and this was faster. Um, I just wanted to let folks know that the groundwater protection committee, so I'm the, you know, I'm the um, the liaison from the planning board that's appointed to the groundwater protection committee. And the groundwater protection committee has uh released a fact sheet on PFAS in in groundwater supplies. It came out via, I saw it in a couple of different ways on the um town press releases, on the news, on the website. There's two forms, one is the short form, which is just like a really colorful one pager that has a QR code on it. The idea is to keep that in like Board of Health desk or whatever, so that people can just see it casually. That's what was sent out. There's also on the groundwater protection committee website, a link to a longer document that's about six pages long that goes into a little more detail for people who are interested. So I just want to let people know, you know, given that one of the town's wells is, public well supplies is out of compliance and the other wells have shown quite a bit of data of PFAS in them, even if they're not quite over the the state line yet. Um, there's one central graph in in both of the documents that shows how Sherburne compares to statewide averages. And um there's a larger percentage of lower level hits of PFAS. So even though we don't necessarily have more like exceedances of really problematic levels, we have a lot more ubiquitous presence um that is toward the uh levels that might be concerning, much more so than statewide. So just, just a heads up, because we're all septic and all groundwater, you know, that's the suspected to be the main source. So um.
Is there a section of town that is, uh, shows a greater prevalence of it than another?
I mean, for sure, like the areas around um the, I think the landfill hasn't started its testing, but there are areas around prior landfills, like around the Framingham and Natick borders, if I remember correctly. I don't, I don't remember the landfill history, but the longer page does talk about that, that there have been known, you know, higher concentrations in areas where there's known contamination. But the longer page does talk about that, that there have been known, you know, higher concentrations in areas where there's known contamination. So that might be around old landfills, around the general chemical area, stuff like that. But other than that, there's an influence of septic. So you can see, I mean, there's not like, because it's, um, there's a lot of exceedances and people are really wary about what to do with that kind of data on private property. There's not readily available maps that'll show you exactly where the PFAS is showing up. But I can tell you that um, it's spread, it's spread around. Um, some of the highest levels were in surprising places where there's not really anything. So um, it's really spotty. So I think the, the overarching recommendation is to get your well tested. So um, you know, there's state programs that would sometimes do that for free, but then it's state data, right? So it's public data. Um, so there's uh, there's a couple of people in town who've been testing for it. There's a couple of labs that will do it that are certified mass labs. It's hard, the town can't make recommendations. I know that I'm personally pulling together a couple of households in town who want to get tested, including my own. So feel free to ping me on the side if you're interested in joining a group. Um, but uh, just so people know, it's, it's not, the problem is not going to go away.
So this, the testing that you're talking about, is it specifically for PFAS or you're doing general water testing that includes PFAS?
Uh, either way, it's the PFAS itself is in the two hundred to four hundred dollar range. And then the general water quality parameters that you might want to get tested, if you don't do that regularly for your own property anyway. Um, I don't have a quote on that yet, but I have, I have the lab person that I just need to talk to later this week. So um, I can provide, if anyone's interested, I can provide data, but it's from me as a person, not from uh, the committee's recommendation. But I'd be happy to provide costing that I'm encountering. And there will be, there are definitely discounts if we get like a certain number of households that want to test in Sherburne on a certain day. And they can economize their travel and stuff like that.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I know when we moved into town, we were new and we had young kids and we regularly tested. I think every two or three years we were using micro back. I don't even know if they exist anymore. Now it's kind of fell off on our, I don't know, maybe we thought, well, everyone's lived this long, we're all okay. But yeah, I think we're due for testing our well again. Um, uh, and it did, you know, we had to put in a softening treatment, but um, nothing concerning other than I think we had copper and things that regularly come up in people's wells. Great, thank you, Steph. And I guess the only other thing is, is Town Caucus is this Thursday. Planning Board has two open seats on the uh, anticipated ballot, one three-year term and one two-year term. Interested candidates running um, should attend. And I think it's eight o'clock on Thursday.
Eight o'clock at the Sherburne Community Center.
Community Center, right. And Caucus is not an official town event, but it, it's run by a separate caucus committee. Um, however, it is the method for which most of our kind of candidates are identified. It is a way that we identify a candidate. Otherwise you take out papers and get, collect signatures um, with the town clerk. So it provides a, an easier way to be identified at Town, Town Caucus. So. Anything else for tonight?
This is the town planner report. Just gonna let people know that um, we're starting to finally getting the point to start looking at other grant opportunities and trying to look at uh, some roadway projects. I want to start getting back into the sidewalk project. And uh, just trying to get through Town Meeting first and hopefully a lot more coming.
Yeah.
And pick up the trails project with Rob.
Yeah, I guess actually, usually I expect sometime end of March, April, we'll hear if there's any movement on the um, Bay Circuit Trail crossing grant application that was put forward for the Shared Streets Grant last fall. Fingers crossed, it would be nice. All right, well, if there's no further um, discussion needed for Planning Board, I, a motion to adjourn, it's uh, nine oh four.
So moved.
Seconded. All in favor, Addie May Weiss, I, Frank Hope,
Aye.
Will Dunham,
Aye.
and Rob Wolf.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Um, good to see you virtually. We'll figure out the in-person. So we will see you in person on, on Thursday night at Caucus at Community Center. So. All right, good night.
Night.